Okay, Mayor Begin.
I'd like to call the special city council meeting of May 28th, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Jacob?
Oh, here, I'm sorry.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sismarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
And Mayor Please?
Here, I declare quorum, please stand, join pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Superfly to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic.
Republic.
Stand. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
The justice for all.
For all. Okay.
No minutes to approve this evening. I have no written communication. Nick, do we have anybody that is waiting that wants to be heard or anything?
I see nobody, Mayor.
No, wait, there is a, there is a number, though, that's unidentified. Nine nine two seven six three oh seven six eight nine nine two seven.
There is.
Yep.
There is no microphone.
Right. It's a phone number, it's a phone number that called in.
And no way of hearing what they have to say?
They muted themselves.
If they called in, or they muted themselves?
Yep.
I can unmute if they'd like to speak.
Well, let's see, I mean, if they're on.
There you go.
This is Alan Lang, sorry guys, just listening in.
Oh, okay, no problem. Thank you, Alan. All right, next, under mayor's. We're ready? Okay, under mayor's report, first off, I'd like to take a moment of silence for former Alderman Dan Chokey, who served for approximately eighteen years in the Wooddale City Council. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family.
Why can't I hear who's talking?
Michael, we have a moment of silence. Okay.
Mayor, could I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
While we're on the same solemn note, could we have a moment of silence for Carl Lang? Carl Lang served on the Wooddale District Seven School Board as the longest-serving DuPage County School Board member, and his wife Dorothy is on the Park District Board. Carl passed away, I believe, on Monday evening.
Okay, we'll take a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Too long.
Okay. Next, next item, I need a motion for a resolution supplementing the mayor's emergency proclamation. We'll turn this over to the attorney, or unless somebody has some changes. What you have in front of you is a draft, of course, staff and the attorney. Mr. Bond drafted something, just so we can have a starting point, so it's ready to go. Do I have a motion?
Right, then, motion.
Second.
Are we?
Was it Mike?
Yes.
It was Mike.
Yes.
Is the motion?
But, okay, does anybody want, anything need to be changed, or?
Mayor, if I could? Can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, so I understand that the staff and city attorney have put this all together to have this, the number one goal is to get this out as quickly as possible. In an effort to do that, they put together this wire framework. I think as we looked at all the things going on, and the things that we've done, have already done, I was looking at maybe changing that a little bit to be proactive, and looking that this might not be the only thing we're able to do, and circumstances are pretty fluid and may change in the future, so unless there was some other opinions, I was looking at making it a cost share, a fifty-fifty cost share, which keeps in line with most of the things that we do. The facade program, the generator program, pretty much all the programs that we run in the city have a cost share component, so I'd like to see that run. This program be run the same way, and would look at making it fifty-fifty cost share up to four thousand dollars, meaning the city would be putting in two thousand dollars matching funds unless somebody else has another opinion. Can I be recognized, Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, I'd like to make it twenty-five hundred instead of the two thousand, so be up to five thousand dollars. Three, five hundred, and then they'll.
What are you looking at, cost share, though?
Is that, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
No, hold on, hold on, we have, wait, one second. So we have a motion for, as is, of course, those, this is just a draft. So now Alderman Woods brought up two thousand cost share, now it'd be max of two thousand. So basically fifty-fifty, so they spend four thousand, we give two thousand. Alderman Catalano saying twenty-five hundred.
Mayor, if I could be recognized momentarily?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, so the purpose of this is, Alderman Woods indicated, he had participated in the discussion. You know, the governor talked about the phases without giving any dates of implementation. Phase three is the opening of the restaurants and bars for outdoor service only. Now, the problem with that is, they gave no guidance, they gave no direction, and some of this would be violation of our city code in some instances, and in others, it may even be a violation of the zoning code. So we looked at doing a couple of things, one is, which is on the agenda, which is liquor license. The other was looking at these different code amendments, and it didn't make any sense to go in, amend the code for a temporary situation, and all these different code sections, I think I found eight specifically, some of which you couldn't do under the timeline, because you'd have to have public hearing or whatever for the zoning matter. So rather than go through that exercise, and then come back and revisit this in August or September, whenever things seem to return, this was put together for purposes of what we're having as a discussion, to say, okay, here are the things that we need to protect the city, given the fact that the governor said these can, these can go forward, but again, without any guidance, so we put together some with input from the various department heads, obviously under the lead of the city manager, and with input from Alderman Woods was gracious to share some of the ideas on that. And again, what's in there is designed to be something for you, for your discussion purposes. If there are going to be any tweaks to it, and again, you have the authority under the mayor's power, and that's what we're doing in a supplement to the, to the original proclamation, because you have a great deal of authority and latitude under the, under the act to be able to do that. So we tried to accommodate everything in a singular document to address, you know, vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic and patrons, to address restrooms, and how to protect all that. So my suggestion would be, if you have as part of discussion, rather than every time there's an issue, put it to a vote and amend the motion. My suggestion would be to have the discussion, any issues that someone has, for example, is it twenty-five hundred or two thousand in a matching? Let's do that at the end, and then the mover and the seconder can accept those or reject those, and we can deal with what's left, and the hope would be, we'd come to it through the discussion, some type of a consensus, and then there'd be essentially an omnibus amendment that would incorporate all of those, and then we can go ahead, as opposed to just taking each individual item if there are any further ones, would be my recommendation from a parliamentary standpoint.
Right, but right now, we have a two thousand and twenty-five hundred. Are we gonna vote on each one?
No, Mayor, could I be recognized?
Get a consensus on which way people want to go, and then we'll incorporate all those that you reach a consensus on into a singular motion, and if there's no consensus, then we'll deal with those individually.
Okay, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, so I personally didn't make a motion, I was just throwing the, the concept out there, because there was no cost share component in the wire frame that was put together, and that was kind of a base number, that wasn't a motion, I think Alderman Catalano actually officialized it with a motion making it a fifty-fifty cost share at twenty-five hundred dollars, so the, if the person or the business spent up to five thousand dollars, we would, we would contribute or grant twenty-five hundred dollars of relief. And the next second did that.
Hold on, so Mike, you made the motion, do you agree to that cost share of twenty-five hundred? So that means they spent five thousand, we cost share fifty percent, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's separate, that's separate from the tax, correct, the, the sales tax?
There is no sales tax involved in this discussion.
All right, that is fine.
Okay, and the second.
I was just, Peter? Yeah, so, yeah, I agree.
Can I be recognized? Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, my, my question is, so I'm a little, I'm a little confused here now, because I thought it was supposed to help the businesses not to spend as much money. I thought that was the whole purpose of this. Okay, so the problem is, at first, it was, the memo that I got was, the memo that I got was three thousand, or what was it? Three thousand dollars a staff put together, or something?
Correct, that was a draft, so they put a number in there, just to put a number, it's up to the council to discuss, right, so when the staff, we had a discussion last week, it could be two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand. They, they put three thousand, and they put three thousand down as a number.
Well, was that, Mayor, can I continue?
Go ahead.
So was that, it, in the, obviously I'm having problems with my iPad right now, so my question is, what was in the memo, did it say a cost share at the beginning at all, or it was just to give them a, they submit the receipts, and then we reimburse them for up to so much more?
That's the, so the discussion was, how much can we give per business, right? So, like everything else, we do cost share, right? So that's what was brought up by Alderman Woods, and then Alderman Catalano. Cost share, so if the business spends five thousand, we're gonna give twenty-five hundred. If, if some businesses are not gonna rent tents, they might use some tables and chairs they already have, so they're not gonna have these, they might have only expensive barricades or something. We don't know, every business is gonna be different in this situation, and the twenty-five hundred should give them enough money to rent a tent and some chairs, and probably get them through the end of August. And honestly, if it continues past August, we'll probably have this discussion again, and are you gonna be willing to cost share again? Or what do you want to do, so?
Mayor, please, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, so to Alderman Eugene Wesley's point, yeah, I mean, the key is, or the thought is, to get the, A, to get it out as fast as possible, that's why we put together some verbiage, and staff and the city attorney laid things out, so that anything that we changed or modified could be dropped in there quickly, and get the program implemented as fast as possible, because the, most of the businesses I talked to are wanting to open, you know, Friday by ten or eleven o'clock, so this has to be done quickly. The governor obviously didn't give us, he made some changes, thankfully, to the executive orders that he had to move up, opening up the restaurant, so that's forced our hand to move faster, there hasn't, you know, and being that this is a fluid and very dynamic situation, as the mayor pointed out, there may be need to do something down the future, so we're trying to get the money into the hands of people, but not just toss money, and try to be consistent with all the other programs in the city. So we think we'll be able to accomplish both of those things, the way we set this up with the cost share, and in the future, if necessary, be, be in a position where we could probably help out in the future also.
Mayor, you got him?
Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
Yeah, it's Alderman Woods's proclamation, or is it, is this more like a sunset clause? Is it gonna end on a certain day in August, or are we just gonna put a date on it, open-ended date, or?
If I could answer, because I, we've talked about this, there, there's no sunset date, there's a, there's an amount, so if we see that things are bad, and it has to be extended, we'll extend, so they could put in a receipt on, let's say, this coming Monday, they put in a receipt that they spent five hundred dollars, they would get two hundred and fifty dollars back. If the next week, they determined that business was great, and I didn't think I needed a tent before, and now I need a tent, and they go out and spend a thousand dollars for a tent, or, you know, two thousand dollars for tables and chairs, or whatever it is, they submit the receipt, and they'll get their thousand dollars, and the following week or two days, they might add something else to it. So until they exhaust, or spend the five thousand and exhaust the two thousand five hundred grant, it'll continue. I think the only sunset involved is, and the city attorney can correct me, is on the the executive order itself, if I'm, or the liquor, the COVID license, I think one of them had a sunset. Pat?
Mr. Bond. Yeah, that, there was a sunset provision.
Hold on, Michael, hold on, go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, there was a sunset provision, and again, this is, this was designed to get something, some relief to these businesses with a very short notice from the governor and his executive order. It can be modified by the way that we're doing this, if you decide that there's, there's additional expenses you want to consider, but the guts of the program are really what we're talking about in terms of administering, is it going to be a cost share? If so, yes, fifty-fifty, what's maximum amount? That will give the restaurants and these establishments and bars an opportunity to get what they need, and they'll judge the, you know, patron numbers based on what people are coming in, and that might shift their need, but we do have a, there is an end, the end is there, they max out on that twenty-five hundred, so that's a max, and then as Alderman Woods said, there's a sunset provision that can be extended if circumstances warrant, and the liquor license portion of it, which they would need in order to be outside serving any alcoholic beverages.
Go ahead, Michael, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess they covered it, I just worried about, you know, we could, say by, say by August first, I already spent all twenty-five hundred, are you guys, you know, what, how do we change that? Oh yeah, we're gonna do it again, or what, you know what I'm saying, something, amend today, I think we should go back, you know, kind of like the generator program and everything else, does this have an end date? For the twenty-five hundred, if you don't have, spend it by August first? You don't get it, or it doesn't carry over, I'm just trying to make sure we don't.
Michael, it's very simple, you've got couples, like the ice cream shops, are the ice cream shops gonna be renting tents, or are they gonna put a couple tables outside? They might only use two hundred dollars, three hundred, maybe, maybe seven fifty. So they're never gonna use the twenty-five hundred, but some of the bars and the restaurants, they might do tents. They might start out without a tent, and then go to the tent, but twenty-five hundred is the max they're gonna get for right now.
I guess it's me, but I don't think you understand, is, is it gonna be allowed to keep it going after August first? Is what I guess I'm getting at, there's, you're not putting a sunset clause, you're not putting a date, so when August first comes, and we're still in this predicament with the state, you're gonna say it's extended from August first now till September second, or, I mean, that's what I was getting at, you're not putting an ending date on this thing at all.
So what happens is, what if the governor in three weeks says, okay, we can open up restaurants at sixty percent? That's gonna change the dynamic of things, and then, then it comes down to, if this, if it lasts the way it is right now, and it's at the end of August, sometime in August, it might come back to you and say, okay, here's the deal, doesn't look like we're gonna reopen until late September. And then the council has a decision to make, do you want to put up another thousand per restaurant, another five hundred, another fifteen hundred? We don't know, everything is, like you said, fluid situation, very simple. In August, beginning of August, we'll look at it, and don't forget, if you do this twenty-five hundred dollars here, if everybody takes advantage of it, you're gonna be around another seventy-five, ninety thousand, it's gonna cost us. So, again, we've already put out, it was two hundred thousand, was it, last week, between the liquor licenses and the business licenses, and then another hundred fifty thousand, city stickers, and there was one other thing, I think we're, we're already at three hundred and fifty thousand, plus, plus this, it's gonna put us up around four fifty, and don't forget, we're also losing sales tax and motor fuel tax. We're estimated to lose over three hundred thousand, so right now, we're at three-quarter million dollars. You guys will have another chance, if this continues, on what you want to do going forward. It's, this is just a starting point. If somebody decides to get a grab again, and wants to spend, you know, you know, twenty thousand on tents, well, come on, the city's not gonna pay for that. You know, this is taxpayer money, we are trying to assist, because they contribute to our tax base, and if we lost fifty percent of them, you know, we could start losing significantly more money. Any other questions?
Mayor, can I be heard?
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
And I'm not seeing it now, but it, before, when I read this, I thought, this money is, grant money, this is coming out of the tourism? Because this is where, what's coming from Prairie Fest money, that we would have spent at Prairie Fest? Mike, correct?
I can take, I can take.
Go ahead, Mr. Mermish.
Yeah, it was just hypothetical, as far as where we could potentially draw the funding from. One, one account could have been tourism fund, obviously promoting restaurants, local businesses, and then there was some new monies potentially in our green electric aggregation program that we could potentially use. Those numbers were in aggregate two hundred thousand, but don't forget, we do spend a hundred and ten thousand on Prairie Fest, but we've taken revenue, so that's not accounting the revenue we would have taken and offset, it was just a calculation in the actual account.
Okay. Nope, thank you, that's it.
Any other questions? So, Pat, do I understand that we only have one amendment, and it was motion or agreed, and second, they're agreed? Are you okay with that, Mr. Bond?
Yes, yes, and I'll make the, I'll make the changes to that, so it would be approved with the, as amended, with the fifty-fifty cost share up to a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars per establishment.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes, great job.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
That passes. Mr. Mermish, do you have anything to report this evening?
Oh, yes, I have one item, my one item is there is no report.
All right, thank you, we have no consent agenda, committee chair reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, public works, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, finance and administration, Alderman Woods?
One report, Mayor, I have an ordinance amending chapter five, section five point three oh four eight point two of the municipal code of the city of Wooddale of nineteen ninety-three to provide for the creation of a class COVID temporary liquor license, that is my motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, Alderman, do we have a question, any questions?
Yes, I have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, one of the businesses called me today, and with the outdoor liquor license and the outdoor dining, is there a hour, are the hours that they normally are open, remain open at the same time, or does it?
Their liquor license controls the hours.
Okay, so.
So if they're, whatever, if their liquor license is one AM, that's what it is. Now, we have a noise ordinance, so after nine o'clock, if they're a little loud, don't forget, some of these businesses are by residential, the police will be called, that's a different deal, but their liquor licenses, we're not gonna constrain them to shut down at nine o'clock, they're gonna have to control the noise, so if their patrons are getting loud, and the police get complaints, the police will be out there, so.
That's fine, that, that, I just got a phone call on that today, so I just want to make sure that we aren't holding.
Good question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Sismarski.
What in the provisions have we written down about exterior lighting? Maybe, as I, you might be, some people might be reaching the back, I just realized that you just had some, some residents, somebody's businesses are butted up to homes, if somebody has a generator or a light in the parking lot, or what, how do you want to deal with that?
Mr. Bond, you got an answer for that?
Yeah, and, and what we're trying to do is accommodate, you know, accommodate the businesses, and obviously, we have a provision in there that all city codes, all other provisions remain in full force and effect, the city retains the right, it's specified in the, in the license, as well as the other resolution supplement, that the city retains the right to enforce all police powers it has for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, so that gives, you know, if it, it does become an issue where the lights are are on, and it's, it's in one of the establishments that's closer to a residential area, the police can go over there, they can address it in that fashion. If the liquor license holder does not comply, then they're putting their underlying liquor license in jeopardy, as well as the COVID-nineteen temporary license, so there's a, there's kind of a big hammer for them to make sure they comply with the other city code provisions, so to the extent there is any, any lighting that would be offensive to neighboring property, that will be addressed, and, and, you know, police will be called, will address.
Guess the follow-up, that would be, the follow-up would be, I guess, you know, the generator obviously would fall under the noise also, because you can rent these from Sunbelt, or RSC, or Sun, you know, the ones we use for the fest, people can personally rent those, so that noise would also fall under the nine o'clock? If it's close to a resident?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, correct, it would fall under, it would, it would fall under our noise ordinance regardless of the location, if it's close to a residential area or not, it would be the same threshold for that particular zoning classification.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do have one question for you, Pat, before we go on. When it came to the tents, twenty by twenty, we did not want twenty by twenty tents, but if somebody had two ten by fifteens or something, is that allowed?
Yeah, that would be allowed, the reason for the larger tents is, they're more difficult to secure, they require to be anchored, they, they require an inspection under our code, so that becomes a whole host of other issues that come into play. The smaller tents, while they may take up the same amount of space, the smaller tents don't pose those same, same issues from a safety standpoint.
Okay, did somebody want to be recognized, I'm sorry?
Mayor?
Sonny, whenever you get a chance, go ahead, here.
Go ahead, Sonny, you go first, go ahead, you haven't spoken yet tonight.
Question, you just hit on it, with the tents and all of this outdoor stuff, will there be permits required, and if so, would the cost of the permits be applicable to the cost sharing program?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond, I believe no, no permit for ten by fifteen tents, correct, Mr. Bond?
That's correct, and the whole thought was, these businesses have suffered financially. That's correct. And the whole thought was, these, uh, businesses have suffered financially, uh, where the, in the, uh, in the license, the license fee is being waived for this temporary license. There would be no permits. Uh, if they did with the bigger tent, which we're not allowing, they would require, that would require a permit and an inspection. Uh, so that's one of the reasons that that's not, uh, being allowed. So for bringing in additional chairs and so forth, uh, there are no additional permits that would be necessary for tables, chairs, barricades. Uh, they do have to comply with, uh, the, uh, Illinois, uh, motor vehicle code, so they can't block the, you know, the part, the traffic cannot be backed up on Irving Park or one of the other thoroughfares. Uh, they can't, uh, park illegally. All those other restrictions will remain in place. But there are no additional permits that would be necessary. And that was by design, just to make this easy. And again, this goes into effect tomorrow, and I'm sure these businesses are hungry to get open. So, so we tried to make it as streamlined and as, as, uh, efficient and easy for these businesses to, uh, to, to get back on, on track as best they can under the restrictions imposed by Phase Three of this, the governor's, uh, Restore Illinois plan.
Mayor, uh, city manager, real quick, you, you misspoke. The, the correct size, uh, the maximum size needed for no permit in the advertised literature is twenty by twenty, not ten by fifteen.
No, no, no. What I said was twenty by twenty, we're not allowing, but if they did two ten by fifteen.
No, we are allowing, we are allowing twenty by twenty.
I thought twenty by twenty is four hundred square feet, and that's what, when you needed, uh,
Yeah, no bigger, no bigger than four hundred square.
That's the max. That's the maximum.
Yeah, they can have multiple four hundred square foot tents or smaller.
Okay, so twenty by, I understood when you guys told me twenty by twenty, you needed inspections.
No, anything over that. That's in the advertised material. So all the businesses will have that. It, it will be listed. It's twenty by twenty.
Got it. Okay.
Well, for me, the insurance clause, does that cover any outdoor activities? Holding this.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, uh, we, we have a provision in there that they, uh, uh, agree to hold the city harmless. There's a, uh, uh, provision, not only in there, but in the, uh, previous, uh, resolution. And we still enjoy, uh, the protections of toward immunity against any liability. But under their gram shop insurance, they need to, uh, they need to have, have that. That protects the city. Uh, this, the restrictions under this license, uh, add an additional level of protection to the, uh, city for the, for those types of things. And they're responsible. You know, if a chair blows out onto a road or something happens, a chair collapses with a, a patron, that's all, uh, their responsibility. The, the city assumes no additional responsibility. It's completely within the, uh, the, the, uh, responsibility of the property owner, in this case, the license holder.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. I'm done.
Good. Alderman Woods, were you asking to be recognized?
I, I was, but if Peter wants to go.
Oh, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, and this is for Pat Bond. The other day, on the news, they were saying that they were looking to pass where, um, you could sell, take, uh, like you, that people could, uh, they could sell take-home cups of liquor. Is that, did that happen, or did that not happen? Does that affect us?
We do not, we, I'm sorry, we do not permit that. Uh, we had discussions with that, with the, uh, with the city manager and the, the, your administrative staff, including the police chief. That, that is a recipe potentially for disaster. One, uh, establishment wanted to give you a, a Dixie cup or a, uh, you know, a, a Styrofoam cup and send you on your way. So that is not permitted. Uh, you are permitted to drink, uh, uh, and consume alcoholic beverages on premise only, uh, uh, under this, uh, restriction. And the, they, they still are going back and forth on it because some establishments box it and sell it, others were doing it on a, on a per-drink. Uh, so there's no, no definitive, uh, answer to that. But under the, under the, uh, Restore Illinois and the governor's orders, we still, uh, and the mayor is the local liquor commissioner. The, the authority to regulate these establishments falls squarely within the, the purview of the city council. And so we can impose additional restrictions. And the thought was that, that could potentially, uh, not add additional exposure to the city, but certainly could be dangerous to the citizens if you have people driving up and getting sort of to go like you would at a McDonald's, uh, you know, a beverage with alcoholic, uh, uh, content.
Okay. Hold on one second, Peter. We do have a couple businesses that have their licenses allow for the sale of a package.
Package.
But not.
Right, but it's got to be.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob, follow up.
Yeah, so the state can't, the state can't say that we're overriding the municipalities. I mean, we ultimately still have control on the city.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
That's correct. Yeah, that, you have the regulatory authority over the liquor establishments, the number of establishments, the number of licenses, and the conditions of those licenses is within the, the statutory mandate of the city. Welcome, Eugene.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little guidance to the, when we were talking about all the things with the business owners and the codes and, and all the things that are going on, obviously, uh, you know, I, everything is flexible and everything could be tested. So what, all the business owners that I've talked to, I just told them that they have to really use their common sense and not let things get out of control. We don't want them to try to test the police department or force the police department to, uh, enforce certain things. So they, they really have to be on their toes to, to keep order in their own establishments and, and make common sense decisions. So we don't have to test the governor's laws and the police departments. That would, that's just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Any, anyone else have a question?
For Jeff.
Go ahead, Mike.
Jeff, Jeff, were you able to talk to the park district with that Matt Alman? Does, do the, do the businesses know what they can do, or?
Uh, the, I did, I, I did speak with Mr. Alman. He did say that they were arranging for some sort of, uh, distribution of tables within businesses, but I don't think he was planning on widely advertising that, but it does seem to be an option.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I had, uh, actually had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Alman later this afternoon, uh, and he was going to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce to share in and put something together quick. Probably just a one-page thing, uh, and send it out to the businesses, saying that, uh, they were renting tables and what the agreement would be on the tables. Uh, that happened, uh, probably three or four o'clock this afternoon. So I don't know if it got out or if it get out this evening or tomorrow, but, uh, he was going to put it out.
Mayor?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Alderman Wesley, you were first.
Yeah, so those tables for the park districts are already out. White Cottage's got some, uh, Woody's got some, Three Sons got some. So they already did that program.
Yes.
Three Sons. Three Sons, uh, Tom's Axe.
Okay.
So my, my question, one other question, Mayor. So our tents are twenty by twenty. Could they have more than one twenty by twenty?
Yes, Mr. Bond, is that correct?
That's correct. They cannot have a tent in excess of, uh, twenty by twenty. That's a maximum threshold. They can have multiple tents.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Alderman Messina, you were next.
Yes. With those tents, can they be expensed for reimbursement?
Yes. From the city you're talking about in the cost share? That is one.
Right, so. So they'll rent from one taxing body, and another taxing body will be able to pay them, pay that expense?
Huh?
Rent. We have one tax, we have one taxing body being the park district that is going to be charging, right, renting them?
For tables.
Just for tables.
Right. No, I understand that. And they can submit that expense, I guess, as a pack question. There's no issues with that. With us, the city, another taxing body paying for those, using taxpayer dollars to then reimburse business owners for that. Is there any issues with that, Pat?
Mr. Bond?
No, it's, I mean, that is an expense. They just happen to get it, the, rent that from the park district, which goes into the public, uh, funds, uh, as opposed to going to a private entity and renting it. From our perspective, it's still an expense that they needed to, uh, to incur in order to be able to open under this Phase Three Restore Illinois. So that would be a reimbursable expense regardless of who they rented it from.
Good.
You have a follow-up?
Right.
Hold on, Mike.
Nope.
Alderman Messina, are you?
No follow-up.
No follow-up.
I'm done, yep.
Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
Yeah, it's like, like Randy's question. Well, they're not actually a taxing body because they're a fee-based store, and they, they make money on fees. And that's what I came up with that with, um, Mr. Alman. You know, it's a delivery charge, a pickup charge, and a per-table, per-week charge.
They are a taxing body, though.
Well, yeah, but they make most, almost all their money on fees.
Correct.
Pool, the pool, the exercise yard, everything else.
And real estate.
This is just helping, this is just helped them out a little, is what I came up with it for.
They also make money in real estate taxes. Alderman Woods, were you next?
Uh, yeah, I, I was going to just touch base on the multiple tents. And, and then reading this, and we talked about it, is that you could have one tent, two tents, three tents, four tents. But you still have to comply with all the other rules and regulations. You still need parking for the, you still need the drive rails, you still need the ingress and egress. You can't just cover your whole parking lot with multiple twenty by twenty tents. So there will be a maximum, and that maximum is really imposed by the site conditions and the number of people you have there. Just wanted to throw that in there, so people didn't get a little too crazy with it.
No, they're going to still have to have parking, of course. Any other questions?
Oh, one, Mayor, one more thing before we, yeah, uh, and this is to, uh, Mr. Mermish, city manager. Where we, did we put anything in there? I didn't see it. I know it was talked about, uh, about parking at the Metro lot of people, you know, because we are going to use up some spaces. There might be a, a need to use the Metro after a certain period of time, or the parking area off of Front Street, which is kind of central to Taco Tuesday, Woody's, Christie's, White Cottage, and all that. Uh, did we put any blurbs in there about that being open?
I don't believe there was a blurb in there for that specific, uh, topic, because it wouldn't be applicable to, um, all businesses. Um, I think we can maybe handle that on a one-on-one. Um, so, no.
Okay, yeah, just as long as it's out there and people know.
Yeah, no, it's, it'll, it'll be a known thing. If anybody requests, we'd obviously accommodate.
Thank you.
One last question.
Can I have one more question?
Alderman Sorrentino, you were first, and then Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Uh, is there a, uh, the ordinance, um, how many feet away they can be from the mothership, so to speak? So they're not renting vacant lots in town?
They have to be on the property. Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, they are required to be on the premises where they have a license, where their liquor license is located. They are restricted to that particular property. And as Alderman Woods said, you know, they, the, what they put in there in terms of tables, tents, and barricades, they have to provide sufficient parking for the number of patrons that they're allowed to have. So this is only going to allow them to use portions of that. They cannot use portions of other people's property. Uh, they're subject to the, whatever restrictions. If they're a tenant and they're in a strip mall or whatever, that there's other patrons or other businesses, uh, they, and they are allocated a certain number of spaces, that's the amount of space they would have unless they got some, uh, release or authority from the landlord, condo association, et cetera. But all of the activity has to stay on the licensed premise address.
Thank you.
So. Alderman, go ahead. Alderman Wesley?
That's Alderman Messina, can I be recognized?
Wait, wait, Alderman Wesley was first.
Go, let, let him go first, because I forgot my question.
Okay, Alderman Messina.
Yeah, I guess to, to, to clarify, uh, that with, uh, attorney bond. So they're in a strip mall, and the tenant next to them allows them to use that space. Can that be space where they can set up a tent?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, they could if they get permission from the, the tenant, or they, they probably would need it from the landlord as well. Uh, but again, they would only be able to have it sufficient for the occupancy that will be allowed in their, in their particular establishment. So, but yeah, they could if they, if they, uh, found a, a, a neighboring tenant who was willing to allow them to use that portion of it. But again, the, the, the license service is all for the, the premise itself. That would be a unique situation.
And, uh,
One follow-up?
Wait, follow-up to that. Georgetown, so spoke to Georgetown management, and basically, if, uh, they're sitting next to an empty spot, though, that business will be allowed to put tables out in front. That's what they're doing over there. They're trying to stay out of the parking lot at Georgetown, just to let you know.
Would they pick up the op, would they pick up that occupancy from the next door?
No.
No, it's still the sidewalk. You're talking about a Georgetown?
It's still, I'm talking about anywhere. So we, we can use Georgetown. So if I pick up the, if I'm allowed and I have an agreement with the neighbor to put out tables, am I allowed, am I adding occupancy to myself, like my allowable occupancy? So my store, my restaurant, I'm, my capacity's sixty, next door's thirty, do I now have ninety? Or do I only have the sixty that?
They can only do it so many. They still have to social distance. The tables have to be so far apart, right? They have to follow the guidelines. Unless they're going, they can't take up the entire parking lot. It's not going to.
That's, that's what I'm trying to avoid. It's, um, I mean, there may be tenants that are more than willing to give up their space, especially after hours. You may have a dry cleaner that closes at five. Go ahead.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, no, they, they've got an occupancy limit. They can't exceed that occupancy limit. And actually, that occupancy limit will be restricted even further uh, based on social distancing. So you're not going to have someone have a big, uh, festival in Georgetown with that large parking lot. So they would not be, uh, they'd be able to use that, but they, that does not increase their, their occupancy.
Good.
allocation. So Mayor, you've got a, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, so what you've got, if, if the discussion's over, then you've got, it would be the motion, it would be to, uh, approve the ordinance amendment allowing for the COVID uh, temporary license, uh, with the fifty-fifty cost share up to a maximum of twenty-five-hundred, uh, matching fees from the city for those eligible expenses uh, predicated upon submission of a receipts.
Wait, for this motion?
Yeah.
For this, just a temporary license. This is for the liquor license.
Right, right. I mean, that's our, that's.
The other motion is done already.
Right. So you've got, you're, you're approving the ordinance, right now, the ordinance amendment to the liquor code.
Right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
This one for you. Go ahead.
Who was that?
I think Eugene tried to get in again. Go ahead. You want to, we're going.
Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, I, I thought of it now. My mind went in. My question to Jeff, the city manager. So we do all this paperwork, we approve all this today. Are we physically going to these businesses and handing this to them and saying, this is a plan that we passed tonight?
We are indeed. We, we. We are indeed, actually, earlier, or actually, late, late last week on Friday, we worked feverishly to not only get something in their hands via hand delivery. We did snail mail, and we did email. Um, actually, Grant was directed to leave this phone call to finalize the draft, which I circulated earlier this week for that very purpose. We're actually getting the email final version out, um, immediately after the meeting's over, and then following up once again with hand deliveries and mail tomorrow morning, first thing. So the answer is yes.
Because in the, in the.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the one you put out, I believe you set up to three thousand dollars in a.
I never sent, if, if you read that one, that was never sent to businesses. That was only sent directly to you as an example of what we were going to send out once you plug and played the accurate number that you chose.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions?
Just to you, Mayor, and, uh, on, on top of, uh, Alderman Woods, about the, uh, testing the police. Are you, as liquor commissioner, some city, you know, some, some, uh, places have a one, two, three-strike deal where, you know, they get caught? Are you, how strict are you going to be on this?
It's very simple, Michael. I've had three businesses call me already. I had three businesses call me and ask me, you know, what's the deal? I told them, very simple. You need to control per the guidelines, per CDC, per the. You need to control per the guidelines, per CDC, per the governor, every, all the, you have to follow all the correct guidelines, health department, everything. If you decide that you're gonna sneak in at 8:30, you're gonna sneak in and jam your place and some patron feels uncomfortable because they're sitting in the middle of this big crowd, then you're forcing our police to come out. They're gonna get called, they're gonna come out. I asked them, please don't put us in that position because we will not be lenient. I laid it on. It's not gonna happen. They need to follow the guidelines.
I understand that. I just want to make sure that's where you're at. That's where everybody else is understanding that, too. It's not, not a game.
The police do not want to be called out because, you know, you're nervous, but you want to go out of the house. You go out and have a beer and a hot dog or a burger, whatever.
Right.
And all of a sudden, instead of being six feet apart, you're really shoulder to shoulder. This person's gonna call and complain to the police department. I mean, I know I've seen it on the news already in Arizona. The police come out and make the restaurant owners change things up. We don't want, I told them, we don't want the police being called out because you're trying to jam them in there. You need to control the situation.
No, I understand that. And I just want to make sure that everybody out there understands where you stand.
Yeah, they.
Stand in all, Alderman Woods, put it in the same perspective, you know.
Right.
Don't make us use, don't make us come in there, you know, don't test the waters, don't test anything. Go by the guidelines, make sure it's done.
The rest of you may get calls. That's the answer. Don't, don't have our police called out because then they're gonna have to enforce. And we don't want to get to that stuff. I mean, they've been called for two months. Do they really want to take it to us right now? So I'm.
Mayor, just, Mayor, to that point.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
There's provisions in this as well as the previous one that requires and mandates that they comply with all current codes and so forth. So all of those remain in play. And, you know, to the extent that there's an issue, I know the police will go out and get them to comply. And if they don't, then the mayor is capacity as a liquor commissioner can take action. But this, this temporary license can be revoked summarily. So it doesn't have to go through all the same process.
Right. I mean, if you listen to the governor's thing, I've heard discussions, if you have like garage doors and sliding doors, I think they allowed you up to five feet or eight, was it eight feet into the building? If you had an open air, you know, where you can slide the whole wall open, it's a big sliding door. So we don't have anything like that here. So that's not gonna be an issue, but.
Yeah, it's my question.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman.
Is that mute?
Unmute.
Peter, wake up. Unmute.
Hey.
Hey.
Peter. Somebody.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Smareski?
Yes.
Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor. Mayor, could I just?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the most recent ONCC Technical Committee meeting, which we haven't had one in a long time, but they put out some statistics again. The big one, or the glaring one, was that we only had nine different residents in the city complain. There was probably some 300 complaints, but it all came from nine people. I'm one of it, one of them, so it narrows it down to only eight other people. I'm assuming you were one mayor, so that narrows it down to seven other people complaining. So we're not, we're not getting heard at the meeting because everybody's like, well, there's really nothing going on. You only had nine people calling.
Randy, believe me. And I knew I've got more than seven people calling me. And I tell them, I go, do you call in? Ah, so I don't, I go, well, then you're not helping us out. I go, and I give them the stats. You can't force people to call in. They're gonna complain, but they don't want to call in. I don't, I don't know what else to tell them. We've tried, we've tried. And I know we had a group of residents out there for a while trying to get people to, you know, and I don't know.
So I just wanted to put that out there. I know that the airport's making it harder and harder on people to complain. That's why the complaints are down. The phone lines have changed, the answering, all that's changed. Just so it's out in the airwaves that that's how low it is, only nine unique complainants.
And, and the temporary flight quiet is not operational right now because of construction and whatnot's going on. So. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask harder question?
Go ahead.
At the, at the meeting, did they say what percentage, how many flights are going out a day compared to normal? Like 10% of flights? Or did they say anything about that?
They didn't, but they did. And I'll, I'll try to hunt it up. It was actually a nice graphic. I meant to get it out to the people on the council. Do a historical picture, graph. Yeah, of what the different events, life events that happened throughout Illinois's history and what that did to the air traffic. And you could see, at least for the first couple three weeks, I mean, traffic was reduced by like 90%. You know, it's slowly coming back. The, what they did say is residential, or not residential, but personal flight is down, but cargo flights are up. So we lost in one category and gained in the other, which is why some people might see or hear more nighttime noise with landing on cargo planes as opposed to takeoffs with passenger planes, depending on what runway you're off of.
So during the flight quiet hours, we used to have 300, about 300 plus flights. And most of those, 200 of those were basically around the shoulder hours, around 10:30 and 11:30 and 5:00 and 7:00. Now, that number is down to 50. That was the latest number. As far as how many flights per day, I looked into that this week. The number will be out by next week's Friday meeting for April and May. In March, they had 65,000 flights. If they, if it truly went down 90%, that number's only gonna be around 6,000 or 7,000. We'll see what those numbers actually are. Sometime next week, they'll have those numbers and they should be on the website. But I know they're gonna have them ready for next week. Not this Friday, but next Friday's meeting, April and May numbers. But the nighttime stuff, they said, has been around 50 flights per night lately.
If I could just do that, and I do know from the business I'm in, that most, a lot of, and the people I'm talking to, that a lot of companies are forbidding their people to travel right now. So even with that, the flights are gonna be down from first, people going on vacations and business people traveling.
Well, the number they said was about 90%. We'll see when those numbers come out, how many flights came in and out of O'Hare per day. We'll see it next week. So, next, Stormwater, report, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, we have no list of bills this evening, no executive session, no items to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Have a good night, everyone.